The meeting to order since we have everyone uh here. So, welcome to the September nineteenth uh MBTA Communities Working Group for Wakefield, Massachusetts. Calling this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Roll call, vote for attendance of everyone. I'll start with Greg.
Here.
Robin.
Here.
Matt Lowry.
Yeah.
Matt Bowen.
Yep.
Julie Smith Galvin.
Here.
And Aaron Kokinda.
Here.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. First order of business is approval of the meeting minutes from for July eighteenth. Has everyone had a chance to review those meeting minutes? Or have any comment prior to taking a vote? Okay, uh in that case, I'll take a roll call vote to approve the July eighteenth twenty twenty-three minutes as issued by Aaron. Greg?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Matt Bowen?
Yes.
Julie Smith Galvin?
Yes.
And Aaron Kokinda?
Yeah.
Jim, I think you need a um motion and a second, though, first.
Oh. Sorry.
Motion. I'll motion.
I'm all second.
Thank you for keeping me honest, Julie. In that case, uh I'll uh roll call vote passes uh based on a motion by Julie Smith Galvin, second by Matt Lowry. Uh moving to the August fifteenth meeting minutes uh issued. Does anyone have any comments on on those? In that case, do I hear a motion to accept the August fifteenth twenty twenty-three meeting minutes as distributed by Aaron?
I'll second.
Okay, in that case, roll call vote. Greg McIntosh?
Yes.
Robin Greenberg?
Yes.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Matt Bowen?
I'm staying.
Julie Smith Galvin?
Yes.
And Aaron Kokinda?
Yes, sorry, I was just getting up to speed. I'm sorry. Did who motioned it first?
Uh Matt with a second from Julie.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And the motion carries six to six zero with one abstention. Okay, so that's the housekeeping uh in terms of getting the meeting minutes approved. So, moving into the agenda, um Aaron, did we figure out the issue with the screen sharing?
Uh you should be all set now.
There we go, okay. So uh so first thing, just to go through the agenda, um I think uh Robin's request. We uh in terms of the multi uh multifamily district, uh we could hit that with uh. I would normally do it for items unanticipated, but I'd like to go out of order on the basis that it's a clarification of additional guidance that the state issued since the last time we met. Uh and I'd like to turn over, Aaron, do you do you want to walk through some of the? The additional guidance?
I sent this over to the group. Um so basically what they came out with the state is some additional guidance on being able to include mixed use as part of um your develop uh being able to include it as part of your district. Um and so you know, I was reviewing some of it and sorry, I'm just trying to get back up to speed because it's been a little bit since I've looked at it as well. Um and after some ca- uh conversations I've had with folks in town and and um I Jim and I spoke as well as I spoke to Ezra as well. You know, I was thinking that we would probably kind of stay true to what we're doing now because it kind of I I think the mechanism of the special permit might be work in favor of us um a little more. Um but it will allow for us to have a a non-residential component on the ground floor of buildings, so you can include it. Jim, I didn't know if you want had more. Um I didn't prep myself completely on um exactly like what I I read through it. In pretty great detail a month ago, but not I don't have it right in front of me now. Um.
Yeah, I think the ta- the takeaway when when uh when we looked at it was that the the new guidance from the state would allow you to have a mixed-use component on the ground floor plane included in the MBTO overlay district. There's it looked like there were some additional nuances in terms of trying to make sure that it was applicable as I read it a- across the entirety of the zoning and of the district. Or so you I wa- the way I read it is it it looked like there wasn't a clean mechanism.
Do you want to stop sharing? I can pull up the memo, the one-page memo that they sent over.
But I I recall it looked like it wasn't a clean mechanism to provide for a um a zoning, it 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 looked like it would be um you'd have to get into some fine details in terms of segregating where you this new component would be. Where it would be um potentially not allowable the balance of the zone, if that makes sense.
So, just in theory, is there not? So, right now, we're saying that we have geographic four zones, but the rules to all four zones are the same.
Correct.
Is there not an option to say that there isn't, there is one area within it that does have separate rules and that allows us to capture mixed use because you know, we were being very careful to like not lose the opportunity for commercial on like we lost or we were criticized or zones were connected because and our logic was that we wanted commercial to be there. So, does this not give us an opportunity to you you know, make it one section and not have the disconnect if certain areas are mixed use?
You know, if I'm being a hundred percent honest, I don't I like Aaron, I looked at this pretty in-depth for a while and I'm trying to go back off of memory without rereading it, but I believe that it wasn't a requirement, but it was allowable.
No, and I understand it's not a requirement. I'm just saying, and and I'm I'm kind of playing the thinking of how people will understand is that we have mixed use guidance right now in some parcels, and we've said that that does not within our MSBA because we want that density and the opportunity for mixed use. But if someone advocates for having less MBTA land within this label, they're going to question why we aren't applying the MSBA to mixed use that we have and then reducing the perimeter that we have established.
You still need to show that.
Now can have commercial on the first floor.
Yeah.
The total units is still the same, so it doesn't change anything. So, if you think about it, it actually would make the the land a bigger area because you still need to get to that unit code.
No, I I guess I was thinking that um.
You would change that one district like the downtown district we have?
Right, so so you could allow more units on a parcel to offset the first floor not being available. And actually, I was not thinking of downtown. I was actually thinking of Foundry Street. And where it is a higher density, can we not have an MBTA overlay on that, which is already an overlay, so it's an overlay on the overlay or something?
Except uh uh you with with the overlays, you're using one or the other for compliance from a zoning perspective. You know what I mean? So you could disregard other overlays if you're using this as a as your zoning approval mechanism.
Again.
Okay. So could this not, if if we were to make a separate section for that area, eliminate the other that is existing? The other mixed use? In order to capture it as part of the MBT, I'm just trying to, you know, people are going to question how much land.
Theoretically theoretically, you could, however, the other existing zoning, because it's by special permit, it gives the town more uh ability to review and waive certain dimensional requirements and such, whereas this would have to be as of right similar to the balance of the MBTA zoning. So I think the argument you would get if we tried to do what your advocate or what your suggestion would be that we got rid of the other zoning and put a MBTA overlay or MBTA community overlay in place, you're giving up town control of review of projects.
Except that we still can do plan review.
Which is totally different than special permit, though. Site plan review is a lot. I don't know what would the word be, Jim and Matt, less um comprehensive, is that?
Yeah.
And and the and the threshold for uh obtaining a site plan approval is much lower than uh a special permit, because a special permit, you're specifically waiving requirements and therefore that triggers an appropriate trade-off for community benefits and review to make sure that if you're above and beyond the allowable zoning, what you are appro- uh proposing is appropriate, whereas if you're a site plan approval, it's theoretically as of right, so unless there's a specific reason to reject it because of some clearing, non-conformance with some other requirement, then you're kind of have to approve it. And Greg, you can you can provide more color if you think I mischaracterized either one of those statements.
I thi- I think.
And I think in general, keeping adding complexity is not what we we want to do in this situation. I think we have a good story. We kept it away from yeah, the the development area or the overlays away from our downtown areas. We keep control over the downtown areas in general and not allow any of these contemplated uses by right is an easier explanation than this unit or this section A over here, we allow this, section B over here, we allow this. And and you know, then people not understanding it uh as a whole.
Okay, I I think that when we're preparing for public presentations, then the inclusion of explain the difference between special permit and by right with plan review should be kind of part of the presentation because I think people are going to ask that question, so. For those who, you know, are aware of this other overlay, just a thought.
I think it's a good thought and probably something that we should plan on adding some language to our presentation. First.
Sorry, I'm just reading just to get a hopefully a better explanation, but you know, after talking to uh some internal people here, like I said, Ezra, it seemed like what we had was probably um a better fit because I think too with the mixed use, if we create this overlay with the mixed-use multifamily, we would, yeah, like I think um Jim was saying, we had then have the dimension dimensional regulations um with height and things like that, um could only allow like two or three stories. So I think with the special permit, it gives you a little more flexibility, but also at the same time, from a town's perspective and the ZBA. It's a little uh level up from doing just a site plan review.
I think from, I think when when Aaron and I looked at it and we were trying to figure out if we wanted to bring it to this board for reconsideration of what we were the path we were going down. Our thought process was that we you would basically take what we've done to date and almost throw it in the trash because the.
Wow, yeah, I'm aware of that. I just want to be of.
No, yeah, uh yeah.
The the public is going to get involved, so we need to be sensitive to like new development and being prepared to have a explanation of why it was considered and dismissed. And if we didn't talk about it, then I feel like we can't say that it was discussed, you know, and have reasoning behind.
A hundred percent, and I think I think the the storytelling aspect of it is that it would cede control that we already have in our existing zoning by making it as of right, we came up with a creative solution that respects our downtown while introducing gentle density adjacent to our commercial corridors without imperiling the commercial nature of North Albion and Maine. I think that's fundamentally the 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 explanation of why we chose the pathway we did, unless others disagree.
And we can, you know, I know we're going to go down the path and show the map and stuff, but um you know, if you have any follow-up questions, um there was actually some office hours today, um with that um you've actually have office of uh livable and uh livable and working commu- workable communities, something like that. Sorry, I'll get it down sooner than later. Uh but they'll be having them once a month too, so they should be having them in October too. If we I don't, I think you could maybe potentially just make a downtown, like I'm thinking Main Street area with this um. I think you could still carve out a district and have this mixed-use multifamily district. But what that would look like with our overall numbers and things like that, I I'm not quite sure because I haven't played around with it. So I would need to kind of look at that and just um double check with um with them as well on on um if you're able to do that, I'm pretty sure you can, but I'd have to ask them. And still keep our other districts as it as the the uh you know, three, four families, so. Me too.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, and also with um the guidance that came out, they really did hone in on the grants that you will not be able to or you will not get kind of considered for. Um I mean, I'm sure they'll still look at you, but I think by being in compliance with the state, these are a number of grants, so. Uh for example, um we're taking advantage of this community planning grant right now, so that would be kind of out the out the door, all discretionary. The urban agenda, uh we also took advantage of that last year. Um the MDI is something I've looked into as well to do some downtown studies. Uh Brownfields um underutilized properties program is something that uh something like the eighth building could take advantage of in the future, same with collaborative workspace. Um and so um if you ran through all of these, um there's definitely a lot of opportunity and they they kind of list them all out here and MVP and and projects that go with that as well, so. I just wanted to to make notice that note of that because they went into greater detail because they kept it very vague at the beginning.
Yeah, and I think, Aaron, that's a good point. We're probably going to want to update that. What if we don't comply slide at some point in order to include all that additional information that's been provided by the state? So, so what I like to do right now is I'd like to pivot, so I'm I would like to pull up the the proposed overlay that we've got from the town's GIS staff. Uh so this map is, as far as I can tell, reflective of the direction, if you bear with me, I'm going to pivot for one second, of this set of markups that we did at the last meeting. Uh I don't know if other folks have had a chance to review or if they have any additional comments. But if if not, then I'd like to get to a point where we can uh agree that this would be the the basis of the map that we're going to utilize to start distributing out to the other members of the town in order to start using this as the basis of the overlay. Uh does anyone have any comments or anything in particular we want to take a look at as it relates to this map?
I have a question. You're you're showing the offset from the centerline of road. Is there a reason for that or?
Sorry, what was that, Matt?
You're showing um offsets from the centerline of some roads there.
I thought that's what we decided on at the last meeting in our notes, I noted that.
So, Matt, I think the basis of that was that the centerline of the road is by defining the offset off of that, it's a defined point such that it's clear where the district extends or does not extend. And by doing that, when we write the zoning, the intent was that if the district is, if the lot is not fully within the zone, then it would be excluded. So the way that it's drawn right now would exclude a number of the properties along north Albion and Maine in order to preserve the commercial character, character of those. And the thought of putting the actual offset value is to make it so it was clear as it relates to where the district does or does not extend to.
Okay, yeah, I I get that, but why are you using the centerline of the road not the uh and the reason why I say that is because there's a few streets here that are variable with roadways. Uh specifically Main Street, so in order to to determine the centerline of road, you would actually have to survey both sides of the road and then split it. So, whereas if you do an offset from the the right of way, you know, the close close side right of way line, it's much easier to determine than if you use centerline.
Honestly, that's that's probably not a bad observation.
So from the lot line, you're you said, sorry, Matt, you're kind of in it like I can't hear you that well. I don't know if it's me or.
Yeah, I I think it should be from the the right-of-way line, the 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 near side right-of-way line, not the centerline because that is easily determined. Basically, from basic surveying, if you had to do the centerline, you'd have to establish both both right-of-way lines, so see the north and south and then split that. So, from a surveying standpoint, and from a practical offset, uh it's it's better to do it from the right of way.
So, if you bear with me for a second, I'll I'll zoom in for an example. You're saying, Matt, that instead of having this hundred-foot offset, you'd be measuring from. And let me know if you guys can see that markup. I know sometimes the Zoom sharing isn't necessarily the best in terms of what you can or can't see, but um can you guys see that what I just drew on the map? Okay, so basically what you're saying is instead of showing where the purple is, you're showing kind of where this red line is because that's going to be easier to establish in the field.
Correct. So, it's going to leave upward interpretation if, say, one of these, especially on Main Street, one of these um lots, you need to go back the actual required distance, you would have to survey both sides of the road in order to split it. It's not a other roads, uh I think Albion Street may be a defined width, so that would be okay, but to be consistent, you just say fifty feet back from the right of way or something like that.
Okay, I think that's good feedback that we can we can go look at. If you bear with me, I'll zoom back out. Did anyone else have any other comments or do they want to look at any of the other components of this map? Does anyone else in the group have an objection to that feedback from Matt in making that revision?
So like it would really just affect uh main, we'd have main. Albion.
Cedar Cedar Street.
Cedar Street.
So with this map, we basically have four different districts, right? Two of the larger ones are connected, but the other ones, they would be separate districts. Is that is that correct?
They're they're not contiguous, but they would be from a zoning perspective, the they'd be the same overlay. But the two contiguous ones, because they're touching, they meet that requirement that fifty percent needs to be contiguous per the the overlay requirements in section three A.
Okay.
But all of the same, they they would have, right now, as is contemplated, and again, subject to this group's uh revision, if we think it's appropriate, but currently as proposed, every the entirety of this district would all have the same dimensional constraints and requirements.
All right, and then going forward, if for some reason we can eliminate um any of the ones that are not contiguous and still comply with the state.
So, I'll do is I'll I'll pull up the, we also have created a map based on or let me rephrase, we're in the process of creating a map based on, I'll call it the minimum compliance zone. And uh Aaron and I are going back and forth right now with the GIS department. I'll stop sharing and reshare. Um so this zone, this zone right here is the minimum, the one caveat being that we have to add a section like we talked about last time when we established this along Gould Street where this zone right here has to get added in order to make make the numbers work. But because these two larger zones are connected, it meets that contiguous threshold very easily.
Okay, again, I'm contemplating people saying, let's just be the government and nothing that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a good solution or it's good for the town, but um I think that it's gonna, that's gonna come up, so.
Absolutely.
No, yeah, and any map that we're doing for the five districts, um I've been working with GIS to do for the three as well, so we're readily avail, you know, it's all readily available.
Yeah, we're just trying, right now, we're just trying to overlay a little bit of additional contextual information, specifically where the Wakefield Junction commuter rail is, some of those relevant bus stops that we we reviewed when we tried to establish the five-zone district as well as the half-mile radius, just to make it easier to contextualize it when we review with the public. So, uh what I would like to do if if folks are amenable is, um I'd like to have agreement that we'll make the adjustment that Matt recommended. But we'll use this as the basis of collating the presentations for the purposes of starting to communicate to the wider community as it relates to what our proposed overlay district is, so we can start that public engagement process. Um if folks disagree, I'd love to have that conversation right now, but otherwise, I'd like to have every have everyone come to an agreement and then we'll start that that process. And then what I'd like to do is I'd like to uh open up that draft public engagement document that uh I transmitted to the group earlier and kind of start talking about what are some of the other to-do's that we need to do as a group in order to start that public engagement. Um I envision Planning Board and Town Council in the near term and then all the other CBA, Environment Sustainability, and all the other groups that we are going to need to talk to.
I don't have a problem with the maps.
I'm fine with it too.
Yeah, so in that case, here I no objection, I'm going to say that that the map that we're representing with the one caveat that Matt mentioned in terms of the offset is going to be what we're going to use as a the basis, so first off, that feels good to say, and thank you all for the hard work on trying to establish these ma- these maps. Uh and now pivoting over to the the conversations with the public. So, this by no means is final. Uh I'm more than happy to go through as much detail as people want to go into in terms of comments. I just took a number of presentations we made previously. Combine a bunch of existing information and then kind of outline where I think some of the maps based on the conversations that this group's had. And again, by no means it's final if other people have other things, for example, the item that Robin mentioned regarding site plan approval is and is one that I think we probably need to go add to this, but um so what I'd like to do is I'd like to just quickly go through what, how I put this together and then start soliciting feedback from the from the wider group. Um so if you bear with me for a second, just a quick presentation. So the reason for the new zoning is basically that the state is passed the bond bill that is requiring the establishment of the three A community zone. The state mandated it on the basis that there's an estimated housing shortage of the two hundred thousand units. We can talk about the housing crisis at this point. Talk about some of the basics of the MBTA Community District of what is being required by the state. Talk about some of the zoning, the review and approval process that we've already completed. Going forward, what that that looks like, just so people can understand what the process, the public process looks like. Talk about the MBTA Community Working Group. Uh the things that we reviewed, reviewed and took into account during our process. Then start getting into maps, just to level set with people, the two zones that we are eligible for in downtown in Greenwood and that half-mile radius, what that looks like. The existing zones around those two, those two areas go into the reason why the working group got away from Greenwood on the basis that it's less than the 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 acreage is, sorry, the density is less than what would be allowable unless we went to a higher density than we thought was appropriate. Start talking about the actual overlay that we're we're proposing, not map, that will be slightly adjusted. Have an overlay with the existing zoning, showing the existing zoning with the new proposed extents um which I have a map, since this this got pushed out to the wider group, a draft of it that Aaron uh was able to get put together with GIS. This one, we can talk about a little bit in terms of if it's worth having a a mixed-use overlay uh over, you know, zone as well. Start talking about and probably cleaning up some of the formatting of these to make the the data's a little more uh easily readable, but talk about the. So height. Max units, open space requirements, setbacks, some of those different elements in terms of the dimensional requirements. Potentially add some information as relates to how that compares to the existing miss use overlay in order to have a compare contrast. Talk about some of the validating that we're actually going to comply with the state, some of those that those data points. And then. Show kind of that minimum compliance map. This is a version of it that had the three colors that we're trying to get one color, so it's a little clearer, and then talk about. You know, basically all the reasons why the working group is advocating for the larger. Section of the of it. We have the slide for the missing middle development context, not sure if that's necessary at this point, based on where we land as a town. And then a couple of examples, I just went on using residency as well as Google Maps, found a couple other properties around town that. Kind of fit the four units. You know, roughly, you know. That five thousand square feet, which is a little higher than what we have as the minimum, but kind of this is roughly what it would look like. Go through a couple of different examples of that. Reference that this is the type of development that we would think would be as a right in in this case. Based, this is one was completed in twenty twenty two on Chestnut Street. Maybe, you know, talk about where some of these examples are shown, it's not just one cluster of them. And then talk about update this slide to show, you know, the, for lack of a better term, the penalties with the state if we don't comply. And then take it for questions and answers. So I know I threw a lot at everyone and you know, there's a lot there, but I'm more than happy to. Fall back wherever anyone wants to and solicit feedback in terms of if this is. What people think is the right track, if there's things that people think are wildly off and or missing, um so. Open to taking any feedback from the group.
Um I have one suggestion, we we should put something in there that um these zones are being created. Does not necessarily mean any of the blocks going to be matched out. I think that's a big fear that people have is that suddenly all these units are going to pop up overnight. There's gonna be no parking. This is gonna be way too dense. This is just affording people the opportunity to do this, in no way it's forcing anyone to do it or requiring it.
And and I think the way to show that is looking at real estate records, like how many houses have turned over in these zones in the last five years? Right? Because it's only when these turn over. Might be one indicator. Or what is the rate of, you know, like what what, you know, how many houses in Wakefield or lots get sold every year or something like that?
Yeah, we we need this somehow grown. Reality here that it's, this isn't, this guy's boring, this isn't the end of Wakefield, it's just a moment of snow and. Progression of uh. Spencer. Everywhere in the world, not just. And we're just trying to manage.
I agree both from uh, you know, someone who's new to this this type of work and who had a limited understanding of. Uh what this whole initiative was about when I. First became involved, I I think those are really important points to to make when we engage the public.
Yeah, I think, thank you for for that feedback, that's really helpful. Um from a more higher level picture, do people think that the kind of the the format of how we. How I put this together makes sense, do people think that the, I'll call it the storytelling? Is in the right order, or if there's anything fundamentally that we should start rethinking or or. Components that we think are missing, you think Robin's suggestion in terms of explaining the difference between. Site plan approval and special permits, probably something that I think probably needs to be added at, you know, in in this presentation at some point.
The penalties, Jim, were they right at the end, is that? Yes, that. I think those probably should be. Closer to the front, you know, why are they doing this and then what is the the stick is? I think a large part of the story. Rather than just leaving that, I think there's less important information in here than than that. And I think with. Yeah, i- i- if anyway, all of this information is important, but I think. Simplicity might be key to it rather than. You know, if there's any way to, if there's anything we think is not incredibly important, but we want to be. Completely transparent, can we move it down into an appendix in case that specific question comes up or, you know, I think. Just as with the map simplicity, but full transparency, of course, but simplicity is sort of key here.
Yeah, that was definitely something I struggled with trying to think about how to storytell around this, you know, I'm not sure. Candidly, if we need to have, I I think having the photos of the development context is probably helpful. Um you know, I think that something like this slide with the, you know, the missing middle. Because it's not necessarily applicable, because you know, while. Yes, there's a triple decker and what we're advocating for would allow, you know, three stories as a right. But I think the one that's being shown on this plan is more consistent with like, you know, the. Six unit side by sides that you might see in a Somerville or Cambridge. You know, I think that the densities that we're really talking about are are not. It's not really well shown here, in my opinion, so I think something like this might go to the appendix if other people agree. Some of the other things that I was questioning whether or not it made sense to keep as, you know, I think the a minimum compliance map is important to. Because I think that's a question that's definitely going to come up, and I think that we probably want to talk as a group about all the reasons why we're not advocating for that. Um some of this inform, you know, kind of this dimensional information, maybe to your point, Greg, maybe this is an appendix. So you're not going through all of that. That, you know, all that information, and you're really just keeping it super high level.
But Jim, this slide actually has information I think you should bring to the. Before the maps maybe is that it lists the number of housing units Wakefield has today. Because people are going to say, what's the worst case scenario? Let's say all the units turn into multifamily. How many dwelling units do we have? How many we're saying we have to be adding to show it's not, you know. To 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 address some people's concerns of just how. Much it could be, but to know that, you know, Wakefield only has eleven thousand. Housing units, you know, I wouldn't have known that, but I think it's helpful, unfortunately, to understand the impact of it. If if every unit was ever taken, right, or every plot. I was glancing at um Lexington's presentations that they use for their town meeting and they, I and I don't. Know that necessarily necessary, but they did do a um. Whole bunch explaining kind of the housing units in town to show where the gap is in that missing metal, so they. Said how many are single family and how many are multifamily and how many are the smaller units? So the story I imagine they told is we're trying to make more of those um units that are not single family. Which I think is compelling, I don't know, something works there, so.
Which, sorry, what was town was that?
Lexington.
Okay.
I can send you to, I have the link on my screen, because I was glancing at like what they used, um and they went into. Even the cost of housing, because you know, that is a large inspiration in that town, which maybe, and I don't think financials are the story we're telling. But um.
And Robin, if you want, if you want to share what you're looking at, I think there might be some value in that.
Okay, do I have permission? I do, alright, um. I've seen.
Yep.
Okay, so you know, they explain article, what is article thirty four, blah, 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 you know, examples, and of course they did some things that. These are all uh Lexington properties that people would know, I mean. Their plan is is bigger units than ours because their lots are larger, um so they gave lots of examples like we do. Um they talk about history, because they have a history of larger buildings in town downtown and they've since lost them, so. Their maps, you know, to talk about trying to actually increase density in the Lexington Center, which is not our story, um. This is a little bit, I think, I guess, about the process of meetings to date that we've had with these folks overlay, more and more. List of all the meanings that have occurred. And and maybe that's under that appendix thing is that saying we've had meetings available for folks to have listened in, you know, before now, it's not that this was done in secret. Um and then they actually zoomed in very tight into what the different um categories are, both. GIS style as well as uh satellite. And then they they have a lot of clusters, I don't know how they met the contiguous rules, but that's. Um they did somehow, and then this is the building type, right, so. Single, you know, the so this shows that missing middle really well on um Lexington compared to the, you know, the average in Massachusetts. Um this is the age of property, not sure what that does for them, um billing permits. And then this goes into income, but I think it's. Our version of the slide, you know, to show the benefit of this zoning, maybe something of value.
I think also that the the number of permits issued is probably a good one too.
What I wrote down, the number of permits that are issued to uh for three or four family compared to single family. I have that data readily available too, um.
I also just think in terms of the total number of permits on a yearly basis, because you can see if it's only X, you know, X percent. You know, to Matt's point demonstrating that it's not going to be, you know, half the town is redeveloped.
I think also too, what I remember from the published, uh I was looking at another PowerPoint we've done in the past. Was brought up to in the public meetings we had at the beginning was the impact on schools as well as um. Is our infrastructure too, so I have some slides and information from a forum we did back in twenty twenty one. Um that highlights, um you know, the impact it actually does have in school, the growth of um of Wakefield when it comes to schools. Uh children and the impact it's had on us, um as well as the the figures here, um the number of um. Permit, stuff to do with traffic as well, each each distribution. Um so I have this stuff readily available um as well here, um. And then I also have the annual building permits by building type um too, so. Um and then enrollment um since two thousand ten, so it's actually gone down by negative five. So um so I have all this stuff pretty available now, but I think that. Is very important to the storytelling, because if I recall, if you guys were on these meetings with our planning board, that was the big thing that people were bringing up. We can't handle this, um our schools can't, our um. Our uh infrastructure can't, our CPW, our police fire, so. I think those are things we have to include in our story, because it'll come up again, at least I think so, maybe I might be wrong.
No, Aaron, indeed, those are, if and when people do show up to zoning board meetings, those are. The same exact things they talk about in addition to parking as usual.
I and I actually like the date of the buildings too, I mean, I would think that. Upgrading these buildings as they sell would be, you know, they'll be safer buildings, they'll be less environmentally damaging buildings, things like that.
But that's a a careful story to play too, though, right? Just because it was built in, I don't know, the eighteen eighties doesn't mean it wasn't updated three years ago.
Good point, that's a really good point.
You're not really telling a clear story.
Okay.
And you also might get people who are who are resistant to the idea of changing the neighborhood character.
And that's why I'm wondering, I might have some old photos. Too, I mean, I think a lot of the um, I I was shocked when I saw some some photos of what downtown Wakefield used to look like.
Aaron, Jim McBane would be. He randomly brings up at every single uh zoning board meeting. This is what this neighborhood looked like in nineteen oh two.
Yeah, so I'm.
I don't know where he gets it.
That, you know, some of the homes that we do see um within some of these districts have been there for a really long time, but um I'm sure there was. Different forms of housing there too, so um. I don't know, I'd have to look more into that, but I think the things I just talked about, I think what Lexington did too. Um the demographics as well, um I think that needs to be actually a really important part of the story, um.
At least on the picture picture and history part, I think you could easily, Jim probably has it ready to go to send to you.
Even though we're not concentrating on Main Street, I'm sure he has other photos of different parts of neighborhoods in town.
Oh yeah, he definitely, yeah. Definitely does.
Okay, so I think the um, so I think that I think this is a lot of good feedback in terms of other. Elements that incorporate into this, um. I think the other, so what I think, what I propose that we do is Aaron and I can circle up and try to get. A revised presentation over the next week or two and then. Um push it out to the to the balance of the group for for review and comment. Um the other component that I wanted to make sure that I I got feedback from this group on is if we're going to be presenting a minimum compliance map. What are some of the reasons why we as a working group are advocating for? A district that's larger than the the bare minimum, and I think that that's an important thing for us to talk about. In a proactive manner, because I I'm already anticipating that we're going to have. Feedback saying the state mandated this, why are we doing anything and what is the bare minimum to comply? So I'd love this solicit feedback from the members of this group, so I do think that what we propose is is a thoughtful. Exercise, but I think that we're going to have to. Put pen to paper in terms of why we elected to propose what we're proposing.
I mean, for me, it's equity and trying to drive economic development in our um. Our downtown area, um. Yeah, I think equity was the big thing that we talked about in this group was, you know, unfortunately, we can't include. Um and honestly too, the economic development piece, I spoke to a business this week. And she said she's seen such an increase in business since some of these developments have come into town, um too, um. And I think too, once I find more of those stats, um when we see the percentage of single family homes. Compared to the other type of housing we have in our community, I think just increasing the. Inventory of more of that middle housing, um because even the small district, I think is only a very small percentage. Um those are my take, that's what I think, but. I I would add that it's recognition that the, if it's meant to be the multimodal, that. The bus route um serves these other, you know, areas as opposed to just focusing on the train.
Yeah, I I agree, I think we need to push the the bus a little bit more, especially. Literally now, while the train is on its service and everyone's in bus anyways. If there are more people that take the bus in downtown. The team hopefully will increase um. Service and it may be more attractive for everyone, more useful, so. Um concentrating people around the business area. With the option to have the the bus or commuter rail, I think it's just, it's a smart way to go, so that's why I would push. Put a lot in this, but why would it help you, it makes more sense.
So drive economic development by increasing foot traffic, by having more residents. Increasing the housing options near quality transit op- tran- transit options to try to encourage the use of those services. And to um. Limit the impacts on car traffic, because you have transit, you know, housing cited in your transit options. Uh and then Aaron, I heard you say you you were talking about um an equity. Take.
Yeah, I I think we talked about, you know, the equity piece when it comes to Greenwood, but I think we also talk about equity about on the other side of Main Street as well, um. Um I thought we talked about that, mistake me if I'm wrong.
No, I think you're right.
Yeah, I mean, we we said that one neighborhood should not. Be the only one of attention. In a positive way, I'd say, not as a.
And then I think one of the ones that. Just in general, I think. Is a goal shared by a number of people on this this can uh working group, but just to put voice it is just increasing housing options. Uh within the town for people, you know, that we're seeing that this is a mechanism to increase.
Yeah, I think it's about different types of housing. I I saw the percentage of what we have for a single family compared to all the other. Types of housing we have in town and it's um like eighty or nine, it's like very high um.
Um, any other things that that folks think that we should be listing on this as other reasons why we think that. This should be increased, or sorry, uh, you know, not just the bare minimum. In that case, so I think unless other folks disagree, is there anything else anyone wants to talk about in in terms of? Any individual component or a high level conceptual storytelling component of this? Okay, so in that case, we're all I'll propose to do it is Aaron and I will start to.
Sorry, one more thing. I just saw my master plan. I think it's a really good point is um. It's addressing the needs and I don't know if we want to include this, but I think it's really important um. Of almost one third of all Wakefield house households who pay more than a third of their income on housing costs. So I think by having a larger inventory um. Kind of lowers the cost burden for people that are looking to get into the community or maybe want to downsize. But I don't know, I just feel like that's always talked about, um, but I don't know if you want to highlight it there. I just wanted to put that out to the group. Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I I don't know how other people feel. I I feel like you start bringing up cost of housing and then you're going to get the inevitable fish block of. How is it that new construction and new housing is going to deliver lower prices for everyone? Because the new housing stock is typically more expensive than the existing. So I find that you're playing with fire if you start making that argument on a micro level. As macro as that may be that valid.
But isn't it a supply and demand issue? I mean, if we have more supply, price is going to go down for everybody, which I think is kind of the point of this.
You you hope so, but the the property that's in the example that we use a lot, the Chestnut one. You know, if you look at what the. Sell price when it was a one unit apartments and then sold for condos. You will see that the prices were not driven down, you know, that the folks who bought it paid almost as much as the whole property was originally, so. It is a.
Kind of the micro versus macro, right?
Well, but I think that's what, I mean. I'm sure very aware of that, you know, example. So it is um.
Example, because I feel like there's a lot of triggers around that property, like it triggers me because they didn't do natural gas, but they put in oil. You know, so like, there's just a lot of triggers around that one. Might, maybe we can find something similar.
Yeah, I mean, I did find a fact here that two, two thirds. Zone land is for single family dwellings only in town and twenty one percent allows two family dwellings, so. I don't know if that would be helpful too, but I do agree with. Yeah, I mean, I think more inventory does help eventually lower the cost, but yeah, I don't know if that example on Chestnut is. The best example.
It it is a great example of what it physically looks like on the footprint, absolutely. What's on the inside and how it was sold are two different matters, and that's not to say that that's guaranteed to happen again.
And it's a good um learning point from the fact that. That building was largely by right. When they came to us, it was only for a small setback issue. So. The story there is this overlay isn't really changing. The, I guess, quote unquote, character of the neighborhood. Uh, substantially, you know, they came to us for as an issue underneath the bump out windows.
No, that's that is a great point, because yes, exactly. I think that it was going to happen even if.
They probably would have took the take taken the bump out windows, would have been fine. Not sure if that's a technical term, but bump out windows, but.
Uh, it it is not. That's not what they taught us in school, Greg, but um I'm sure I use words that you didn't learn in law school, also, or even.
Yeah, that's a really good point. I I like that as the example then.
Okay, so in that case, uh, what we'll do is we'll get this updated and we'll see if we can uh push it out to the balance of the group. Uh, and unless anyone says any comments, I'd like to move to the next item on the agenda. Okay, so the next one I've got is the review and discussion of the draft zoning bylaw. So from our last meeting, we had a number to do's. Uh, so I know Aaron and I met with uh Dan Lieber uh. Yesterday, actually, so we just got under the wire, but um to talk about. Some of the feedback we we from the the bylaw review committee in terms of how we approach some of the, do we sprinkle these requirements? In the zoning code, or do we keep it kind of a self-contained body? And what do we do with the definitions? The feedback we got from uh Chairperson Lieber was that it made most sense to update the definitions in the front of the text. You know, in the body of the balance of the zoning bylaw, but then to keep everything with this MBTA zoning element contained. For the purposes of simplicity of getting this bylaw. Passed, because their intent is to, you know, redo the formatting for the entirety of the bylaw anyway. It's part of the zoning reconfuciation process, and that's going to follow where, from a timeline perspective, what this process will be. So he advocated instead of making a bunch of changes to things that are already reviewing to pass one. Section, keep it self-contained, and then they'll adjust the formatting as they're adjusting the formatting for the balance of the bylaw, which to me felt like a. Pretty clean solution. So um, that was the feedback we got. Obviously, we don't have to to follow that, but seemed like it was a rational case to me, and so. Um, I'd like to to proceed on that basis as we're dra- drafting this bylaw and then starting that process of. Uh, you know, basically trying to figure out how to actually. Get the bylaw drafted in a manner such that we're going to be able to have something that's actually passable.
So just a question on process, does that. Introduce multiple votes to get us compliant then, as in amending the definition section? Will be separate than amending or or adding. The self-contained section. Um, and then, you know, what happens if one passes and the other doesn't? Um, which is a possibility. I just just. If they're going to redo the whole thing anyways. I'm just thinking of processing, we're going to get tripped up here.
So I I that's a very good question, and it's something that we're going to have to, we'll have to validate with Cap uh. Tom Owen from uh Town Lawyer. Uh, my understanding is that this could be one. Proposed zoning warrant that would amend the multiple sections, but uh that's something that we're going to have to validate with Tom Owen. Uh, so that was, so that that feedback we got and then the um. I think the other, oh, what's up?
I was gonna say the dimensional type stuff you said to leave it within this uh bylaw.
Yeah. So that would theoretically make every everything self-contained with the exception of the uh the definitions. And same thing with the parking and the um Darren's point, the dimensional requirements and the um. Applicable uses. That was his recommendation. As I said, we don't have to uh, you know, approve that or disapprove that, but. Think it makes a lot of sense if other folks agree that and then we can kind of try to continue to work these. Bylaws and finish them up. Uh, the other to do's that we had uh listed from the last meeting were to um start thinking about. Design standards uh and to potentially uh loop up with town staff. So I I don't believe that has. Uh, chosen itself to resolution, but think just from this group's perspective, uh for the site plan review. The the decision that we need to figure out what we're recommending and then probably have that conversation with the planning board and ZBA is. Where we think the site plan review would want to go between ZBA and planning board. Think um i- i- in candidly, did not get a chance to mention that to the planning board uh last time that we had a meeting, just. Felt the radar. I don't know, Greg, if you talked to the ZBA, if we thought site plan review would be appropriate for. That another ZBA item or if it would be planning board.
Yeah, I talked to them, yeah, I think in August about it. And they were open, uh, you know, if we come to a, you know, obviously reasonable conclusion. That makes sense. They were open to either one.
Okay.
And and I think we had talked about it first. At first glance, at least um. Planning board. And I mentioned that to them and there was no seemingly no consternation there, so.
Okay. So I'll I'll circle up with the planning board and double check, but if 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 other people here don't disagree, then maybe we'll do this to start the processes to. Have that as a planning board, as the site plan review authority, and then. On that basis, you know, have a conversation. I'm sure that we won't be the first, last time we talk about it.
Yeah, and to be clear, they were very open if for some reason, you know, your members said, no, it should be, they kind of said, no. Do you have a good subcommittee? Figure it out, we'll be, we'll be on board.
Okay.
I have no opinion either way. You guys who sit on the boards know better of who's suited for it.
Then I I think we can, you know, as going into it, we can say it's going to be. The planning board or even the ZBA and get input from other people too, you know, as we go into this process. Some people may feel strongly that the ZBA needs to do it and. You know, if that's the consensus of the public, then. Well, you know, see that too, but. I I think we can, we can say that. The planning board is has some capacity right now and. Um, that might be the best place, best place to go at this point, but if the public disagrees, then we should.
Which might be their argument to keep it with the ZBA, so it takes longer for things to get approved.
Exactly.
Pla- plannings uh voted in, ZBA is appointed, right? That's a big difference, okay.
Correct.
So yeah, the the public may feel like they've got more control going through the planning board, so they can vote them out in five years if they feel like it's. You know, if if that gives people a little more solace that. They have control over it, then then that's fine.
And correct, we if I'm wrong, because we haven't seen it, but. Zoning uh planning board already has site plan review where special permit is not required anyways, like I guess. Called one simple site plan review. We have ZBA has site plan reviewer. With special permit. But without special permits, so there's really no change, right? If we if we do that, I may be wrong, but.
I I think baseline, that's how it works, but I also think that from practical perspective with the existing zoning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's there's basically no. Project. Yeah, there's a theor- it's more theoretical than practical in terms of what's actually being utilized right now. Okay, so then the uh, so then the other thing that I wanted to uh. Start talking about with the group is, I know we talked, we had some kind of general con- conversations around. Um, general development standards and what are the things that we'd want to make sure that we get into a. Development standard, because this is as a right, if as long, so long as they meet this development standards, they're entitled to a permit. Um, I know that we talked about this kind of at a high level last time. Have other members of the working group gone through and started thinking about what are the the items that we think are important to? The members of the working group in order to start um layering into this document.
So I I sent some general comments to Aaron without knowing your background with um. Dan Lieber, but.
I think all your points are really spot on, though, Greg.
You'll see, I didn't put any comments in this area, because I just don't think I have the background to. So that's a long, long way of saying. I sort of defer to the other professionals in this area.
And I think your comments too, um, were really helpful about like suggesting removing things or. That you know that there's already something already in our zoning bylaw um. You know, that we should reference as well as the affordability. We're talking about creating affordable, but this isn't affordable, you know, an affordable. Practice type thing we're doing um. So I'll share it with you, Jim, but I I might go through and make some edits as well, but um they weren't anything um. Too crazy, I think.
And some of it might not apply now that you spoke to to Dan.
Okay, I'll share this with you too, Jim.
Okay. Uh, in terms of, yeah, in terms of the the other uh development standards, are there other things? I I don't know if other members of the the working group have looked at these and have anything that they're particular um. Advocate for expansion or omission of, you know. Vehicular access, parking materials, planting, lighting, all those types of different elements that are included in this.
I would just be intrigued like what's important to people. I know we've kind of talked about, but what you would like to see. I know we talked about um planting bike racks. I think bike racks might just depend on, you know, what the development exactly um. How large it is, but I would kind of like almost want to call it a wishlist and then see if it's kind of within the. Some of the things they cover um from what I pulled from the state. Uh, draft bylaw. So I'll let anyone talk.
I guess when I see some of this, I think it's geared to much larger developments, and when I think of just of a four unit, it seems. I don't know if it's unattainable, but like screening of parking, well, you know. Four units. You know, I I think we're saying has maybe four to five cars or something like that. Like, how do you screen it? It's it's a driveway potential or a double wide driveway. So how do you, how do you meet the screening of? It when you're adjacent to a public, you know, like that's kind of a. It I mean, that makes sense, things like that, or um. And that's the one that jumps out, because it's on the screen. And also. You know, much larger developments with parking lots, I totally agree, but when it's. Limited in number of cars it is, it seems like. Not applicable.
Yeah, I mean, I think from my perspective, some of the items doesn't really feel like lighting. I mean, I don't know how much. Documentation we're going to be looking for from a from a lighting perspective on a. Four-story building, you know, I think it's more appropriate if you're talking about, you know, some of the items that I'm sure Greg has to deal with on like the the. Mixed-use overlay or the special permit process for, you know, a larger scale project, but I. For. You know, uh, foot candle stud or, you know, darkness studies for a four-story building, that feels like it might be a little bit overkill from a. Engineering perspective.
Well, I I I support the lighting down regardless of the size of it, and it doesn't necessarily say you have to give a study um. I mean, you should never have your light, leave your property anyways, just to be a good neighbor.
Is a lot of this stuff lighting, I don't know, because you're right, Jim, we usually have photometric plans and stuff like that, so I don't know, like code wise. Is there like lighting code? Like. You know, is is there another standard if you take it out of here that it, you know, it's sort of taken care of already? On a on a simpler basis.
I I don't know, because I do things that are bigger, so you know, it's looked at very differently. You know, thinking of four, but a four unit is considered a multifamily, so it is a commercial code. Um, I could ask my electrical engineer, you know, if there's any triggers, but I mean, just the language of saying that you're. Your lighting should not overspill on a joining property is the intent we want and. Not having the burden you have to prove it is is, you know, I think appropriate.
So you're still, you're still defining the intent, even though you're not requiring a.
A proof of. Yeah, so like if. Yeah, so like if. If you were to find that someone put the light on their highest point of their of their building, we know. That that will never, you know, not exceed their property line, so you know. If they just described that they're doing. I don't know, something to show a little bit of the park, you know, the driveway and next door door, then you, you know, it kind of passes the intent rule, if that's. Appropriate to be that big.
Okay. I think unless other people disagree, I think that makes sense.
I totally support the support native plants. Um. Stormwater.
Yeah, question on the plants, should it said, what did it say, like adaptive to or adapted or something? Should it just be native?
No, actually, if if you were to do native.
Because I know the CONCOM is is requiring us.
Yeah, I was gonna say the CONCOM has like a whole list of like resident resources where we can maybe pull some things for, like to talk about dark skies, and I know they talked to the ZBA about that. Native planting.
If if you didn't say adaptive, then if someone planted a tulip, they would be out of compliance. Apple trees are not native, you know, like the so it's 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 preventing aggressive um invasive plants. But to to limit only to natives, you want, you know. Um.
I'm sure CONCOM will have their view too, so.
Yeah, so yeah, let's see what they say, but. Um, a adaptive keeps people from planting stuff that would be invasive or overly aggressive.
Did you say that the CONCOM also had good information for dark skies? That might be a good resource for lighting feedback as well?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, as it relates to stormwater management. Uh, I think this one where. We'd want to make sure we keep because we want to make sure that that any stormwater is in compliance with the. DEP uh stormwater management standard handbook. Uh. So I don't think that one would necessarily be a uh controversial.
You you would need to take out the word city slash town and write we feel just to head up, start plugging in our names.
Yep, yep. Yeah, we'll have to go clean up a couple of the the bracket elements here for sure. Um.
Can you just say um engineering, I want to send it over to them as well, just for a quick plan.
Uh, positive relation to Principal Street, I think that's another one that probably makes sense. Have the principal facade facing the relevant. Street. Um. You know. Entries for, you know, clearly define a linked paved pedestrian network that includes a public sidewalk, that probably something that we as town. Want to continue to encourage. For any as the right.
So the only thing with that language and maybe I'm overlearning this is when you're putting something in like a regulation to where feasible doesn't really work. It's introducing complete ambiguity. Um.
Because if you're gonna have a slate plan approval, they could also. Yeah, you know. You could, well, actually now I'm thinking about it, right? If you have this as a right and they weren't, for example, they didn't have that. And we go for a slate plan approval, is that would that would be a. Is this not, that wouldn't be a special permit, would it? If you had something that wasn't, that doesn't in strict compliance with the overlay district?
As in it doesn't have a linked paved pedestrian network?
Just for sake of argument.
Um. Haven't encountered simple. Site plan review, so. Uh, I think it can be, well, hold on. Before I speak, gotta turn here.
While Greg's doing that, um. I'll pull up uh buildings shared open space. This was one that I wanted to highlight and might wasn't sure if people felt it was appropriate for multifamily. Dwelling unit shall common outdoor space that all residents can access. Ground floor, courtyard, rooftop terrace, any outdoor space, Chevy corn counted towards the private minimum open space requirement. Wasn't sure if this is appropriate to have it required for a shared. Open space or, you know, I think there wants to be open space on the projects, but doesn't necessarily have to be a a shared. Area, and that's something we we care about. For this scale of building.
So this is saying that there's open space that has to be shared, or there has to be at least one area that has to be shareable?
At least one that's shareable.
Yeah. Well, someone's front yard counts, right?
Can we put if if outdoor space is not afforded to each unit, then it will be shared? So if each unit has a balcony or porch, then. Wouldn't necessarily need to have shared. Space, would you?
I guess that's more my question is, do we do we as a community have a preference or? A need to. Dictate that one way or the other.
Yeah, I I think we need to point out that. You're not gonna build a box and throw people in it, you're not gonna have any access to outdoor moving space, so. Either it's provided. Per unit or it is a shared space. That's my feeling. I think e- every house should have a decked door porch that's something you know outside.
Yeah, I agree.
For some of the units uh. On North Ave, there was an office building and now it's. It's condo, it means normally no outdoor spaces. To me, it's just shoot my door out. It is.
Right? Uh, buildings on corner lots.
Jim, back to that site site plan review real quick. So in looking at. Current by law, obviously, it's just guidance, that's at this point, depending on where we put it. If we can make it work, it does say, you know, the site planner, uh site plan review regulations is supposed to be adopted. Uh, by the planning board and in those site plan review regulations. Uh, they should include provisions for waiver of any portion of the regulations in such cases where in the opinion of the board, strictly conform to pose unnecessary hardship to. So, yeah, they can each, it's a waiver. Uh, by the, in this case, the planning board, so here, whoever we. Be a waiver, whoever has the um site plan review authority. Obviously, making sure it works with the rest of the by law.
Yep, that makes sense.
Actually, make sure they're linked.
Uh, corner lots, building on a corner lot showing to create primary entrance along one of the street-facing sides of the primary entrance. Uh.
So I take exception to part C, the fire exits shouldn't be facing the street. In a multi-unit building, the front door isn't often, is often a fire exit, so I'm wondering. What they think that they're saying, because I don't know. How that would be facing the street. Unless they're talking about um, thinking they're talking about like external um uh. You know, I'm I'm putting in the word when they do, you know.
Like a metal fire escape?
Fire escape, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. I think in fire escapes, but fire exits. Always, almost, you know, it's the front door. So.
Okay.
But I mean, if people take exception to fire escapes, do we do we change it to say that the fire escape shouldn't be facing the uh streets?
Wood wood buildings of that height, is that how it works when you're mandated?
Well, depends on how to build. If you have a two over two, you could have um. The second floor across from the chestnut uh unit that we talk about, they have a wood exterior fire escape. Um, it's a three-family house, but same thing, you know, so it exists, they're. They have their own regulations, but. Um, so maybe that's instead of crossing it out, saying no fire, no fire escapes. And then I don't know what the serving more than one story is. Um, should not be looking on a street facade, you know, that's the what they're trying to to get at.
Okay, um. See, principal facade and parking, parking shall be subordinate in design and location of the principal facade. Surface parking shall be located to the rear side of the principal building. Prince parking shall be not uh not be located in the setback between the building and the adjacent public right away. And then integrated garages, the principal pedestrian entry shall be more prominent in design than placement of the vehicle. Vehicular entry into the garage. I'm assuming no objections to those.
Um, I I particularly like the integrated garage. It's actually atypical. I see a lot of new construction for that to be the case, but. From a sign preference, I I I'd like that. I don't know, but it'll. People, well, I don't know, and these kind of lots, I don't know how many people have garages to begin with, so maybe it's not an issue.
Yeah. And Greg, you're right, here's the, here's the right there, the waiver. Language. So we'll have to, to your point, make sure that that ties out when we. Get this fairly developed a little further. Um. And then in terms of the site plan review, I'm assuming that we still do want a site plan review for this, and so this twenty-five dwelling we can. I mean, let me rephrase. I'm assuming we still want a site plan. That's an open question, or do other people feel differently in terms of that?
Yes, we want it. I think we've said that.
It's wired.
Yeah, I I think the site family really is is a check and balance that people are gonna really not. If we afford some zoning all the way and. There's no control on it, I think that would be a. Spare to people and please.
Right. And then we'll have to go through and review the submission requirements. I don't know if we necessarily needed to grind through that right now as as a group. But we probably. Conceptually, we probably want to take what's required for a um. Kind of either a. Subdivision or a special permit application and just cross-reference some of those requirements. You know, probably a lot less, but some of the the. Principal elements here. Um. Yeah. So I think those are the main ones in terms of the that I wanted to grind through with the group. Um. Are there any other general development standards that people think are glaringly missing in terms of sections that we should be? Talking about, or is that? Kind of makes sense from a baseline perspective.
Works for me baseline.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so in that case, what I'll propose we do is we'll we'll take some of the feedback that um we got from Greg. From Dan Lieber and from the group here, we'll uh really revise these and then push it out to the balance of the group and then. Um, try to start coming up with a finalized finalization and so um, anything else on the? Draft zoning by law before we move on to the. Next item on the agenda? Okay, uh, so in that case, uh, the next item I've got is a review of the schedule, so um, so right now we. Are basically have the. Presentation that we just got the feedback, uh, we agreed that the map is going to be the basis of the map that we're going to utilize move forward, so um, I know that. Aaron Aaron is trying to work with uh. There was a update that we're anticipating that's going to be presented in terms of where the status of this group is to town council uh. I Aaron, do you know if that date has been finalized?
I won't know till tomorrow uh what that looks like, um, but it was sixteenth, the last I heard, but I don't have a a definite date.
Okay. So uh, if it's, so I think from my perspective, if it ends up being ten sixteen, then it may make sense for us. As a group to meet. Potentially on the third in lieu of going on the seventeenth, just so we can try to review the updated presentation and make sure that we're all. In agreement on it, and then from there, maybe we set forth the communication strategy for the balance of October and such. Unless people disagree, I feel like that might be the easiest. Pathway forward. And then hopefully at that meeting, we'd have enough information that we could finalize the the process through the balance of of the year and we could finalize the presentation.
Sounds good. Yep.
Okay. So in that case, um, what I proposed to do is we kind of push a lot of the 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 overall. Review of the schedule till the the October third, we'll have a working group session where we'll review the presentation for the town council. And we'll um. And we'll continue to work through the bylaw uh draft as applicable, but really we'll try to use that as the meeting to set. Forth the presentation, finalize it, and then set forth all the different meetings that we'll have to go and communicate with everyone, uh, all other boards and. Committees. Sounds good. Okay. Uh.
Um, I have to be completely transparent. That week is just like. I'll try my best to get all this stuff done by October third, but if you do know or don't know, it's me planning town day with a few other folks in town hall. And so town day is that Saturday, so I feel like my week is really going to be consumed with that, the next couple weeks consumes with a lot of that. Um, so I just hope I can get everything to you guys by then, but if I don't, um.
Aaron, why don't why don't you and I circle up after this? Because I think that for the purposes of updating that presentation, I don't think that necessarily needs to be a hundred percent on you. I can.
Okay.
More than happy to pitch in, but I think really that's the deliverable I'd like to get out of that October third meeting is agreement on that. Presentation, so why don't you and I circle up and maybe we can come up with a divisional labor for that?
Okay.
Um, so in that case. Uh, let me see, the last, let me pull up the agenda. So I think the last, so we talked about all those items. Are there any other items that are unanticipated by the chair? Okay, hearing done, in that case, uh, I think we can uh hear entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, first uh moved by Greg, seconded by Julie uh in a race with Jobin, so we'll call vote, uh, Greg?
Yes.
Matt Bowen?
Yes.
Aaron Kokinda?
Yep.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Robin Greenberg?
Yes.
And Julie Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Myself is a yes as well. Thank you guys for the time and uh, thank you for the effort.